Okay, we'll start the meeting. This is the Addison Township Board meeting. Today's May 20th at 6 o'clock and we're at the Addison Township offices, 1440 Rochester Road. If you can all stand for the flag, please. And Joel, you're a veteran, if you could start, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please keep standing.
Good Lord, for this wonderful day. Thank you for the blessings so you can do our township. Help us to prosper over the next year. Jesus name amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Yes. Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Here.
Lynda Garrett.
Here.
Joe King.
Here.
Lori Fisher.
Here.
Beth President, Supervisor Pearson.
Here. Everyone accounted for. Okay, any announcements?
We have one announcement. The Lakeville Cemetery Memorial Day Ceremony is Saturday, May 25th at 11:30 a.m.
Okay, department reports. I believe we have the library board. President James Baldiga, I believe, wants to speak.
Yep.
If you could give us an update for this.
Sure, please.
Okay.
This, the reason I'm here is kind of, comes out of the newsletter, the township newsletter that went out in April or March. And there wasn't anything in there about the library. And I realized that we're separate, but I think outside of this room, most of the community doesn't understand how separate. So I thought I would come to you guys today, just give you a quick update where we're at. We are proceeding to develop the plans to put a building on the donated property. We have retained an architect, an architectural firm out of Pontiac, who's going to be working on some concepts. Right now, we're spending the, we have a new building fund, which is primarily from funds generated by the Friends of the Library for the past decade or more. But we're also in conversation with Oxford Bank on a loan to be combined with the Library of Savings, which get us about where we need to be to build a library on the donated property. So, let's see what else we have here. But we also have to process a construction manager. There's a guy who's been donating his time. He's been very, very helpful in helping us with conceptual budgeting. And his firm is going to be putting in a bid to be the construction manager. And we'll be very soon probably starting clearing some trees because we found it's a little difficult to get people to offer their services when it doesn't look like anything's happening. So we're going to make it look like things are happening. James Elsarelli is working on a boundary where we'll take down dead trees and live trees or whatever, probably go up to the local tree companies for bids, maybe offers a volunteer. And that's where we're at. We're preliminary stages, but we're moving. And I thought I'd bring that to you folks. And if you wanted to ask them questions, or get involved, or help spread the word, that'd be awesome.
Well, thank you. And I do read that, I mean, I know the library sends out a, you know, mailing too. And I read that all the time, so thank you all for telling us.
I didn't get my last one, which is weird.
Oh.
Do you think there's any chance of millage? Going to be necessary to build this?
We are, we want to avoid that at all costs. I don't know if we got to the end of the road and it was the only choice, you know, to go for a millage, if, you know, if we do that. We're trying to do it without a millage. And we have the numbers now for a very modest building, okay? But, you know, everybody on our board wants it to be the best library possible within the budget we have. You know, I look at this as rather historic. It's kind of unprecedented. We'll be, we'll be creating a building that will help define the character of Addison Township. Because everybody who drives through here, and so I wanted to bring you folks up to speed and, you know, not ask them for any decisions or, you know, choices, but maybe just get involved. And, you know, Bruce has offered to, you know, make phone calls when we get to that point. And we're getting pretty close to that point.
I got two questions.
Sure.
One, do you have any conceptual sketches or drawings of what the building's going to look like?
You know, we, we had some other architects come up with two designs, a modern design and a traditional design. And we presented those at an open house in March. Overwhelmingly, the residents who came to the open house preferred the traditional design. Okay? As far as the layout, I can describe it for you. You know, we, based on state standards, we should have about a 5,000 square foot library. And so the architects that we retained, they brought us something to whet our appetite. And they designed a pretty cool looking building that it's a center square, 50 by 50. Okay, so that's 2,500 square feet. And then two wings, each wing, okay, of 1,250. No, 1,250. So a children's and an adults, all right? And then where it gets, you know, where the cost starts to change is, you know, what sort of accoutrements, you know, how far up does the brick go? You want a couple, or how big is the entrance? And what we're finding is, you know, we can safely, between our savings and our loan, which we've spoken with the bag and our auditor, we can safely accommodate a $900,000 project.
Okay, that's some good detail. That's, you know, so there is something.
The designs are 1.1.
Yeah, the other question I have, have you guys, in your whole planning process, made a comparison, how are you going to stack up with other libraries in the area?
No, that's a really great point, though. As far as size or...
Size and features, you know, all the applications that you'll be able to offer.
You know...
How much online, you know, everything like, like in Romeo and Rochester, you know, the libraries they have, the modern libraries, so to speak. Will you have a portion like that in your library?
Oh, certainly, certainly. One of the more exciting things that we're, you know, looking forward to is what we're calling a multipurpose room. We have musicians, and we have speakers, and we have clubs that meet. And if you've ever been there, when any of those events are happening, it's mostly standing room only, which brings in a bunch of people who don't normally come to the library. So then you have other people who maybe don't have room. But there is no space in our current library for the staff other than, I think it's an eight by eight, you know? So we're, we're trying to fix things and, you know, doing the best job that we can with the assets that we have.
It's been a while, but the last time we chatted, you told me that there was a website, which I did go on the website. Is that still available, that Eric could go on and see the layout?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let'sbuildalibrary.org.
Yeah. It's a really cool website. I did go check that out.
And there's preliminary site plans.
Yes.
You can look at the conceptual plans for March. There's a feedback function that will go to the team that's working on it. And, you know, right now, it's, what we're trying to do, you know, we've got a conceptual budget, which is coming in a little bit higher than our actual funds. All right, so the exercise that we need to do is, okay, in our conceptual budget, for instance, we've allocated $100,000 for bulldozing, all right? Can we get bulldozing for half that so that we can, you know, hit our budget? And it's hard to get movement when it doesn't look like anything's happening. You know, so on that corner, there was a big tree that fell over the winter. It's kind of an eyesore. There's a lot of dead trees. So we're going to make it look, this summer, hopefully, make it look like things are happening. And try to generate more involvement and awareness of the project.
Well, very good, because I can, I can show you how chainsaws work. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you guys have come a long way from a little building in Leonard to a little building here, to a bigger building, and now we'll see how you...
Oh, if we look at it, we can go, one chance to, you know, make a mark. You know, either or, so.
Thank you. Okay, move on, petitions?
No.
No petitions, and we'll move on, order of business. Approval will be...
Yes, I'd like to add number four, workers' comp renewal to, to the time constraint.
Okay, and that's the bill for workers' comp.
Correct.
Okay, anybody have any questions about that?
Did I need to tell you about the correction? We already did, but we're not there. Okay. I was just guessing whether yes. There's no more.
Very well.
If nobody is going to make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that? Nobody? Well, we'll need roll call now, please.
Yes. Eric Sen.
Yes.
Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Beth, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
For the board this evening are the April 15th, 2019 minutes. Bills is paid for April 2019. Semcog dues 1223. And Jacob Newby as the delegate. Resolution adopting the 21920 healthcare benefits. And three-year park ranger appointment. I'm just going to say Laura, because I can't say that name.
What is it? Anybody have a good...
Bebblor.
Anybody speak?
Say it again.
I would say the B is silent. That's what I would say.
Bebblor.
I thought the B was silent. Yeah, so did I.
Oh.
Either way.
Bebblor. There we go.
We're going to stick with Laura. We'll stick with Laura.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Aaron Anko, we have roll call, please.
Yes. Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Beth, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay, we'll move on to item number two, is Addison Township logo. You know, Addison Township doesn't have a logo. Everybody else has a logo. And this is wanting to go on our paperwork or whatever, so people know who we are. I think it probably would be a good idea, Paulie and I have discussed this, because people have asked, do we have a logo? And I guess we don't, but it's just like we don't have a flag either. Other townships don't have a flag, but I'm more interested in the logo right now, so... What we're looking for is, first of all, would we like the clerk and Mr. Davis to get together and figure out what the process is, so we can have some kind of a contest or have some entries into people designing them? And putting it out, getting us a logo, and put it out to vote or whatever, or advertise for it? And then the second, how do we decide how we want to pick this logo? Do we want the whole board to see it? Do we want to have a committee?
You can just take one and pass it down, so they can kind of see where... We were kind of embarrassed.
Well, everybody has one. I know that when we go to the Michigan Township Association, we don't have a flag, but I'd love to have a logo that we could put up as you enter into Addison Township, so people can go there and...
Yeah, absolutely. Even Leonard's, Leonard's got one. Welcome to Leonard, okay.
I didn't see that one.
Uh-huh.
Could have a goose with a line to it.
Nothing against Leonard, okay? Let me clarify that. It's all good. But I definitely, you know, I was one of the people that, when I first moved out here, how come we don't have...
Well, we talked about that a long time ago.
For quite a while.
We had the slogan on the sign or...
There's only so much time. Like, this is my down year from election, so I thought, okay, after this embarrassing thing, it's like, this is going to be one of my things that we're going to go forward on if you guys want to.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'd make a motion to authorize the clerk to proceed with legal, to see what the process is, to initiate getting a logo going, and then...
May I ask for clarification? By that authorization, are you allowing us to go forward and advertise, et cetera, et cetera, and get this going? Or did you want to see the final product?
I think the final product should come back here to the board.
Are we looking at an outside advertising agency doing graphic design? Or are we talking about...
Contest.
Contest, a contest.
So we're going to create the entry form. I've been working on that all day. We're going to create the entry form, the rules, the regs, get that sent out. I'm thinking that we won't have them come back till mid-September, end of September, so the kids have a chance to do it. Mr. Davis is actually going to give the award of $100 to the winner and $25 to the runner-up.
Is he funding that? Or are we funding that?
We're funding all of the advertising, all of the paper. He's just, he's reviewing it as our legal attorney, but he is also going to give the award.
Like, what is it, Orient Township, we're living as a vacation or something?
Yeah.
We should say, "Come to Addison for a real vacation" or something.
Well, we got to come up with some kind of slogan, yeah. So to clarify my motion then, is number one, that we're going to proceed. The clerk can proceed with this. And then the other portion that you mentioned was exactly how we're going to do it, right?
Well, two parts. When you say proceed...
Yeah.
When, when Mr. Davis is finished, do you want me just to take it and run with it? Or you, or should I just send it to you? Or do you want it come back to the board for another approval? So I need that question answered.
And that would be the documents for the process, the entries and the advertising.
Yes. Do you need to see those, or you just want me to send them to you when they're done?
Yeah, I think the motion would stand that, just send that to us when you're done with that portion of it.
And we can go forward and advertise.
Go forward and advertise, exactly.
Okay, got it.
And once we get down to the finished line...
Then that's a different motion.
That's a different motion. Got it.
Oh, I like it, yeah. Did I second? I can second.
Eric and Lynda.
Okay, well...
Sounds good.
This one, since there's no money right now, right? All those in favor, say yea.
Aye.
Yea. Anybody against, say nay? Well, that passes then. Is that okay?
That's good.
Because no money here. And that covers both of them?
No, the next one is similar to what we did for the building. We, we didn't have a subcommittee. We did it together as the entire board. I don't know how many responses we're going to get from this, I have no clue. So do we want to do this as an entire board, or, this is the motion that I need, because I need this in our advertisement, do we want to create a subcommittee, maybe of three, to meet during the day and maybe pick the top three or five entries and bring those to the board? What's the pleasure on that one?
I think a committee, the, kind of a steering committee, to kind of narrow it down and then bring it to the board, probably good.
And we'll volunteer.
I would like to volunteer, but if it's during the day, that's difficult for me.
Well, I'm a day guy.
Well, I'd like to be on it too, so...
Yeah, you're around doing it.
Or, or have everybody look through them.
Or do you guys want it all coming back here?
I don't see why we can't all look at it. I mean...
What do you think?
We can have a couple special meetings.
I don't object to there being a subcommittee. I think that we should probably not necessarily narrow it down just to three or five. I mean, if you get 20, I don't feel, you could probably just make an initial quality cut and bring some number, but it doesn't have to be a limited number. Totally, totally limited number.
So I'm kind of hearing mixed, I don't know if you are either. I mean...
Yeah, I'd be totally okay with the board doing the whole thing.
The board wants to do, if you could have a couple meetings, maybe. I don't know.
We could, we could set them up on, on the walls and just do a walkthrough and start casting ballots and eliminate them that way.
Or maybe we could even have, have them here and have people come in, residents.
Part of this is going to be that you guys aren't going to know who they are. They're going to be numbers.
Well, no, I meant, if we had them out, then people could come in and maybe say what they like, you know? Invite the community to come in and look at them too.
I'm throwing this out to you guys.
I always got a question.
If everybody would look at their flyer, Lake Orient, the Village of Lake Orient, for instance, has a really great logo. It has like the dragon and the boat. What would we do if maybe a really good idea came in, but it was maybe, you know, from a child where the lines weren't clean, and we liked that idea, but maybe we just wanted it...
Graphic designer could...
Is that something that we would consider, is to take...
As part of it, it's whatever submitted is going to be ours, and we can use it as we want.
Well, that could be a direction that we could go, though, is to take an idea that was submitted and then take it to a graphic designer and have it cleaned up.
Yeah, a print shop does all that artwork.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't necessarily exactly what was submitted.
We'll have a crayon drawing.
A goose. I need that there. Ooh. I don't know.
Well, what I'm hearing then is that you would like to go forward with the advertising, and then everybody would kind of like to see some of the stuff, so maybe we could, you know...
Maybe we could have another meeting after and make a decision how we want to handle it once we see what we're looking at. I mean, if we only get three, then we're a little overzealous.
And, and this is going to be bottom spot, but it kind of says that you have to give details of your contest. So I think it's important to say, the board's going to review all, or a subcommittee is going to review and then give to the board. So I do kind of have to know what direction we want to go.
I, I like the board. I think everybody's interested in seeing it.
And then I will shut on your question.
I also like the idea of a period of public display before we make a decision to hear comments.
That's a good idea.
Um, I, at this time, don't know if that's possible.
I thought we could bring it back to us after we see...
I mean, what happens if we get that many? We're, we're, I'm hoping we get a lot.
Well, I'd make a motion to have the entire board review all submissions.
Let's, that would be perfect. And then we can take that idea, if it's possible, maybe make copies or something and put it up, but I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can live up to that motion at this time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
So let me get this straight. We already said that we would advertise it. Now we're on the thing that we'll bring it back to the board, right?
All of them.
Okay.
Go ahead, scan and put them on the website.
Okay, so all those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that carries.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, and then I'm going to check on Lori's suggestion, because I don't know if we can do that or not. So I'll run that by legal, whether we can alter that.
Okay, we're on to the next one, which is cemetery niches. Well, a while ago, we looked at putting some of the crypts in for the, at the cemetery, you know, for remains above ground, and after looking into it, they're quite expensive. I don't know if you want to go forward with this or not, but there's a lot of engineering goes into it. The base and everything has to be, there's an awful lot of concrete. There's a lot of expense. And then some of these have to have some maintenance, and the repair falls on the township, okay, for, for the maintenance of everything. So I thought we'd bring this out to everybody and ask what you, what you would think. You know, we have so many lots available in the cemetery, and I don't know what the figure is, but there comes a day when that will fill up. And a lot of people are doing cremations. Now, do we want to put these in at our expense, okay? It's, it's a huge expense at the beginning. And then to recover our costs, you're not going to get cemetery lots for $100 anymore. They're going to be several hundred dollars each for, because we have to recover the cost. So do we want to get into that business? Or do we want to let the cemetery go as it is? And then, of course, we're going to have to maintain it forever, but do we want to go the route of putting these niches in?
Can I ask what we charge for lots now?
$100.
Do you think that should be revisited? I mean, how much are we spending in the cemetery?
The last time we revisited, there was a run on cemetery lots, and I thought I was going to sell out in a day, so I had to assure the residents, no, that's not happening. So just letting you know.
Well, if we do the, what do they call those little crypts?
That's what, niches are, really, crypts.
Um, they would cost a lot more than $100.
Oh, yes.
So proportionately, when we're, when we're looking at doing something like this, it seems like we, we need to look at what we spend in the cemetery and what we're charging for lots, what maintenance is, and something like that. I mean, how do we even all that out?
That's in your budget, and it's never going to even out because of how it was set up. So instead of going there, I, I'll focus on both. So this four unit, anybody can buy this four unit. So this one is the only one that actually has a price, which comes to $24.29 or $607 per, per unit.
Would that be something an individual would buy, or...
They can. They can buy this right now if they wanted to. So then I called two larger companies. I told them, do not put anything in writing, just give me a rough idea. So these are probably way off, but just to give you guys an idea, one company, and I asked for four, to fit 40 in each one. One company gave me a quota $40,000, and the other company gave me a rough estimate of $15,000 to $20,000. So as you can see, we're looking at a hefty amount of outflow. Then, which I was surprised, they will not give us the engineering as far as what is going to be safe for this to sit on. So we have to hire our engineer to determine what type of foundation to put it on. And then we'll have to hire somebody to put that in. They, of course, the company that brings us out, will not guarantee that whatsoever. And then we'll have to finish that. And then we would sell it. And as I told Linda before the meeting, the difference with these, and it's why Bruce wanted to bring this before you guys, is currently somebody's, somebody is buried and they buy the stone, and the family's responsible for the stone. Sometimes we get people to go up there and clean the stones, but the family's responsible. This, the township's going to put in, the township is going to be responsible, as Bruce said, for all maintenance. So we really need to decide, do we want to go forward with something like this and accept that responsibility for a small community like this?
And as you know, this cemetery was set up in 1843, and it is a township-controlled cemetery. Not all cemeteries are. A lot of them are private, and they go on, but we are responsible since 1843 to maintain the cemetery, so that's forever. Now, if we want to add these, I will also be responsible for those.
Forever.
Well, like Linda was saying, we really don't know what's all involved, cost-wise, right?
Yeah, and I, and I don't know what the point is. Are we, are we trying to expand the cemetery to give more options?
We discussed this a while ago, and the board said, "Check it out." And I mean, a while ago. So I checked it out, and before going through all of the bids, it was important for you guys to understand what our role is in doing one of these versus what our role is now. As far as expenditures, I'm going through here trying to find cemetery.
The bottom line is, do you want to fill up the cemetery and be done with the cemetery and just maintain the cemetery? Because eventually, the lots are going to be gone. It's not for a while. I mean, there are, you know, I don't even know how many, but I'm guessing that there's still hundreds of lots left in there. But we're selling a lot of them. I mean, people are coming in buying five, 10 at a time, because at $100 a piece, that's a...
Cheap.
Cheap, right. And we do maintain it. Once somebody's in the cemetery, the township maintains it. Do we want to let that cemetery fill up? That's a, that's a greater question, okay, down the road. And or do we want to continue to do and maintain it and have more maintenance over the years? the years? That's the bottom line.
And I did look up the budget now, so for this year, we budgeted forty-five thousand, I estimated, um, cemetery improvements, I estimated nine thousand, and that was before I called these companies, so, maybe it was to say, we're way, we're off in our budget even for this.
What do we usually spend on cemetery maintenance a year?
Um, wages, we budgeted sixty-five.
Wages are overall expenses.
Well, that one's harder to say, because part of it is snowflop, snowfall, so we can't be a hundred percent. Can't determine how many opening and closings are going to be, and that's a wash-through, so we usually recoup our money for that. But, in this last year's budget, we budgeted forty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, with nine thousand for cemetery improvements, so, we're actually probably at thirty-five thousand a year for expenditures. Some of it's wash-through, though.
Well, eventually, it's gonna become a historical cemetery, and somebody might have a...
It is.
Well, I meant from, like, nobody's gonna be visiting anybody, 'cause they don't know those people.
And there's a lot of those.
It, it is already, and I think to keep it going, you'd have to do something like that, and you'd probably have to buy one every so many years.
That's why we're bringing it to you guys, 'cause it's not just Edman's choice on this.
I don't like the idea of getting any deeper in the cemetery business than we already are.
Which is small.
Especially with, um, what, what is shaping up cost-wise, and then, then incurring the, uh, maintenance costs that we wouldn't, otherwise, we'd just continue.
Cost is still gonna be there. The cost is gonna be there.
Well, the cost's gonna be greater over, throughout the years, if we put these things in.
But, the, the revenue coming back with selling the...
But, you'd have to sell those for over a thousand dollars apiece to even recoup your money, so why would anybody pay a thousand dollars for one of those?
And you're breaking even when you do it.
That's crazy.
You know, and you're not really, you're not paying for the maintenance, you're, you'd have to go higher.
Originally, I thought you would charge for the next one, so, I have a feeling the minimum's gonna be fifteen hundred, and then if you wanna charge for the next one, you're talking three thou, I mean...
Right, and, and the only demand we've seen is for a hundred-dollar lots.
Well, and they do their cremations in the hundred-dollar lot. I mean, people are still doing a lot of cremations, but they're in the hundred-dollar plot. So, what's everybody's wishes? Do you wanna be in the cemetery business, or, I can see why other cemeteries charge three thousand, four thousand dollars down the road, for, uh, if you can get them for that price of them. You know?
I, I don't think I'm prepared to even make a decision on this, something I have to think about a little bit more, maybe we could bring it back?
Oh, we can table that and think about it.
I agree, let's ta, well, why don't we table this?
Man, I don't see cemeteries as being profitable, but we're not about being profitable.
Do you wanna think about it for a month, or table it indefinitely? Where are we at?
What new information do we anticipate would be generated in a month?
I don't want anything from the contractors, it's unfair to them, but I wanted to give you guys a rough idea, so I really can't get any more, um, any, the only thing I could do is ask Matt what type of foundation would be required, but there'll be a fee for him to go out there and, and determine that, so, that's why we brought it to you guys.
Well, I told you what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna buy two plots, and I'm gonna be buried in one, but I'm gonna put the headstone on the other one, in case people don't like me. So, that's a good plan. So, that's two hundred dollars invested.
I mean, so, if we delay a month, all we're doing is allowing us to ruminate on it.
Uh, well, I think we can all do a little research on cemeteries, there's no reason why we can't look at, I mean, I know a lot of communities are very involved in cemeteries, they have BSNA programs managing the whole things, there's a lot of activity.
We have BSNA.
On cemeteries?
Mm-hmm.
We do. I didn't know that.
Yes, just push of the button and their names come up, it's very good.
Cool, wow, okay.
Just so you know, we're older than Mount Elliott. Mount Elliott is, uh, eighteen forty-five, we're eighteen forty-three, so...
Oh, boy.
That's it.
It's an important thing to have.
It is, that's why we're historic cemetery.
We're not closing the cemetery, but do we really want to go down this road, is the question. It's not closing the cemetery.
Well, would we like to table this, then? Is that what we're, we're...
No. That would not be a good one.
So, we wanna table this?
Say your tombstone.
Is it for a month? I mean, tell me what you, what you want.
I think you can go back on the agenda in a month.
Yeah, one month.
Okay. We'll table this for one month, is that okay?
Yep.
Uh, then, we'll move on, then. Workers' comp. Um, I see that, uh, you know, we switched a couple of years ago, and from what I understand, the service has been pretty good, and they're happy with it. Um, we're looking for a motion to, uh, approve the renewal from MML Workers' Comp Insurance for twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four. I did look up last year's bill, and it's actually less than last year's bill, which was twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-six, so it actually dropped. And, it was due that they, they give you a credit, I guess, for how long you're with them, or whatever, if I'm correct, is what I looked on the paperwork. So, this is actually a little less.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal from MML Workers' Comp Insurance for twenty-seven thirty-four, to be appropriated to the fire insurance account and general fund insurance account accordingly.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Uh, here in any, could we have a real call, please?
Joel King.
Aye.
Linda Garrett.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes. We'll move on to public forum. Anybody in the public that would like to speak, please come forward, okay?
I'll speak as a public right now, actually, um, for the Fire Department Association. Uh, for this logo, I think it's a, a pretty good idea, and I would like to, uh, hopefully, whatever you come up with as a board, um, we can incorporate that into the, uh, Fire Department as well, because, um, again, the Fire Department is the township. Um, I would like to see if our Fire Department Association would like to give up a little more money, um, and entice maybe some, um, or the population to, uh, maybe compete and, and try to get something better in here, so, if you don't mind, I'd like to see if the, uh, the Fire Association would come up with another hundred dollars to put on that prize money, if that's acceptable or not, I'm not sure. And I'm not sure how the association will feel for that, but, if not, I would actually do that personally. I think a two-hundred-dollar, um, prize for the winner would be a good incentive to try to get somebody here, and I think the best thing to do is to have the public draw that, and you guys come up with something, and they come up with some good ideas, I think, if they've done this before.
Two hundred bucks? I'm gonna start drawing tonight.
Yeah. But, anyway, just a thought, if you guys want, um, why I'd open that up to the association or myself, if they don't feel, I'm sure the, uh, Fire Department Association would be willing to, uh, you know, to give up another hundred dollars.
That'd be great.
All right?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dave, uh, my name's Officer Adam Annale Road. Uh, two things, unfortunately, I've been dealing with some deaths in cemeteries and stuff like that, Coors Law, you talked about Elliott, and returning, and my grandfather bought eight lots for a hundred dollars in nineteen ninety, and now they're going for twenty-two hundred a lot. So, if he needs some extra money, I don't know if he can tie it into one hundred, but he got too good of a deal. So, you might, you might consider that. Actually, I was going on your, on your logo, and I don't know if you're gonna expand, and you're really talking branding, and not, the logo is, this is one little part of branding, because you've really got, you know, font, and color, slogan, you know, what, what's like or in?
Living is a vacation, yeah.
I mean, so, I, I encourage you, while you're, 'cause the logo's really important, so I encourage you, go ahead and do that, but I'd like you to look at the whole branding concept, because we've got a neat product, a brand out here, so, it's gonna be over your time and go well beyond just the logo.
Very good, yeah.
And we got an expert living in the community, I don't know if he was named yet, but he was in charge of all advertising for General Motors for a number of years.
I'll tell him there's two hundred bucks in it for him.
He's retired, he might, uh, he might get that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in public forum? Okay, let's go on to Addison Township reports. Anybody on the boards have anything that they'd like to say?
Uh, on Noda, uh, the building is coming along great, uh, it has its own building now in Oxford. Um, it's, uh, that's gonna be a big, a big plus for, for the Noda operation. Uh, on the Pollyon Trail, uh, Pollyon Trail recently was dubbed Pure Michigan Trail, which is quite an achievement, and, uh, which is gonna help us, uh, uh, probably with some grand money in the future, and, and, but it's quite an achievement. Uh, we have a, an excellent manager, um, that, that manages the, the trail for us, and, and the council, you know, we've been, uh, working with her very close, and, but that, that's a huge achievement, and it really gets a lot of usage. I was, to be honest with you, I've, I've been on the trail maybe, you know, a couple of feet at a time. I'm not a big walker, or, or, or something like that. Uh, but anyways, I, I think that's a big deal, that we have a Pure Michigan, uh, trail here, so, that's what's new on that.
Okay.
Look at the planning commission, um, we have three things we're working on, uh, one site plan on Rochester Road, um, for a storage facility, we might see that coming back to the planning commission soon, and also a site plan for an expansion on the veterinary clinic on Lakeville Road, um, and also, we're still talking about, um, the setback issue where there was the thirty-foot side yard, or the fifty-foot side yard, uh, setback discrepancies, so, um, maybe, well, I think at our next meeting, we'll be talking about that again, and it'll come here thereafter.
Okay, anybody else?
Pauline, is your intent for the, the logo contest, or restricted to township residents?
No, unless you guys tell me to do so.
Well, Chris Barnett might not want us to have a better one than his, so he might submit some phonies in there, you know, but anyways.
Did we wanna take that up?
I meant to, well, I'm just curious, I realize we really haven't addressed it.
One of the first things that I'm, just so that you're aware, one of the first things I'm gonna do, once we get all this together, is going to send it to all of the schools within Addison Township, so, that's gonna include Upland, Leonard, and Kingsbury, then, of course...
High schools and everything, too, though, 'cause they're...
Yes.
Yeah, tall schools, right, tall school districts.
Thank you. Hamilton Parsons, yes. Um, and then, even though it's gonna be in the summer, I would imagine they do have emails, so they can, they can shoot that out, but if they can't, then the kids will come back in September. Um, in the meantime, we can advertise it by way of paper, television, website, so that we can get the word out.
Just for the just for kids?
No.
Okay, we're all done with public forum, and we're all done with, uh, the trustee reports, so I guess we'll move on now to me. Oh, legal reports, well, any legal reports?
No, but I have communication.
Oh, communication, okay, go ahead.
Um, we received a letter from Mary Shaw Moore requesting forty miles per hour on Oakwood Road from Oxford to Addison Township. We also received a letter from Addison Township Public Library, um, thank you to the Firefighters' Association for the very generous donation of the thousand dollars for the children's department, and also a thank you letter from Oxford Youth Assistance for our sponsorship funds.
In reference to the, um, I was just gonna, well, open up, uh, if we're done with communication, I'll open up the supervisor, for in reference to the speed limits, I've gone to all the meetings with all the other township supervisors, and it's very expensive to do the surveys, and it goes, the best we can do on, on the gravel roads is forty miles an hour, and the state police are not recommending that, because it, uh, it makes people think that they can do forty miles an hour, when in fact, the road is in poor condition, and you really should only be doing twenty-five. So, there's controversy on that back and forth, and, um, uh, most of the supervisors are in the same boat we are, that they have gravel roads, and they're not going forward, they're saying the road should be the speed of what's safe on, they're not posting a forty mile an hour, and how do you write a forty mile, a fifty mile an hour ticket, or, uh, you know, when it should be twenty-five? If they say I should, I'm allowed to go forty, so, um, by not posting it, it's what's prudent, you know, so, anyways, no, and all, all gravel roads in the state of Michigan are fifty-five, and whatever's prudent on them, so, um, we had a lot of problems with the flooding here just recently, as you know, uh, Hosner Road was flooded over, and it actually kinda got wiped out, um, and, um, I did get in the helicopter, uh, with the Sheriff's Department, and I did go up and I kinda found out what was happening, and we do have a huge beaver dam problem, uh, north of Ray Road, that, uh, we're addressing now, and hopefully, um, we'll be able to get that lowered, so that we don't have the same problem, um, and we have somebody who's actually, uh, trying to work on it, who, uh, lives there. Um, I did have a meeting with the road commission, and, um, expressed how dissatisfied we were that they're grading the roads in the middle of the rain, uh, it made nothing but a, a big mud mess, and then I told them how I was very dissatisfied that they followed right behind in the middle of the rain with the chloriding trucks, that made it even worse. And I said, you know, that's just a waste of chloride, and it's, and it made it so that in the evenings, uh, some of our seniors were very concerned, they couldn't get an ambulance or fire truck or anything down some of these roads, because they were a foot deep of pudding. And so, I have a meeting on Wednesday, the road commission supervisors are coming here to meet with me, but I did take it right to, um, the chairman of the road commission, and I had a meeting with him last Monday, over in Oxford, and so now we're gonna get to the bottom of this, because the schedule is a schedule, I understand what they say we have a schedule to keep, but it's just idiotic to be making the roads worse in the middle of rain, and my thing is schedule a different time. Uh, you go to an airport, they tell you you're in the, kind of ice storm, they don't say we have a schedule to keep, and you fly off into the ice storm, no, you reschedule, you cancel, or whatever, so, anyways, I will fill you in next month, how our meeting will go on Wednesday, um, but I was very dissatisfied, to me, it's just a waste of money, why are we chloriding, if it's, you know, just making it worse, they should be doing it when the weather's dry. Uh, the other thing, um, uh, spring cleanup, that was a, a big success, I'd like to thank everybody, I like Pauline for setting stuff out, I'd like to thank all the people who came out and, and volunteered their time on it, it was a, a, a big success. I do see that we're getting less and less, uh, junk, uh, and so, I mean, our roads are less and less cluttered, so, it's made a huge impact over all the years we've been doing it, so, um, and, but, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and helping on that. Um, I will be attending a, an event, uh, down at the DNR headquarters in, uh, South Lion on June fourth, and, uh, that's, I believe, where they're gonna probably present us, not only with one observation blind, but now I believe it's gonna be two for our parks, what the UAW is, uh, uh, going to make and present to us, so, that's pretty exciting, uh, I'm glad that, uh, we had somebody in our community who set that up for us, okay? Um, also, I do know that the Lakeville Lake is reviewing their, uh, their, uh, overlay for docks. Um, I haven't really weighed in on all of this at all, but, um, I think the overlay also incor, uh, includes Seacord Lake and Indian Lake, because it's an overlay of all lakes. So, I would ask Joel, since you live over there in Indian Lake, um, it's a township ordinance that is an overlay on all lakes.
What does that mean?
Well, there's ordinances on the boat, on the docks, what they can be, and, um, there's ordinance on, uh, some trees, uh, there's ordinance on the twenty-five-foot setback. Um, I'd like you to, if you would at least inform us if Indian Lake is involved before there's, or everybody comes to us from Lakeville Lake on wanting to change their docks and everything, to make sure that we have everybody concerned on it, so we get it right this time. You know, I have no problems, I don't care what, um, what proposal the people living on the lake, what they're happy with is fine with us, but I wanna make sure that everybody, we don't annoy Indian Lake or Seacord Lake when we're changing something on another lake, so...
I mean, certainly in none of our meetings has ever come up an issue about, you know, someone putting in an outrageous dock, or anything like that.
Well, it is a township ordinance, and it, it doesn't specify one particular lake, it's all of the lakes, and, um, and, uh, the three big ones are Indian Lake, Seacord Lake, and of course, Lakeville, so...
Are you talking about dock extension length?
No, it has to do with a lot with the, the ordinance, the overlay, there's, there's several ordinances, we're having, uh, issues with, um, uh, the twenty-five-foot setback, um, we just had an incident where somebody cut down like twelve or fifteen mature trees on the waterfront, which is not supposed to happen. Um, then we have people who are putting docks out, and then tees, and, uh, that's become an issue now, uh, everybody's supposed to only have one dock, and now we're getting multiple docks, and like I said, this is, we're only doing this for the benefit of people, the benefit of the people who live on the lake, because this is what they're asking, so if, I'm just saying, we need to include...
So, do you know your, the township is gonna do an assessment of the lake's compliance?
We aren't, we're gonna be, I know that the Lakeville Lake Association is going to discuss this, and I think that they may be coming to us to change the ordinance, okay? And so, before we agree to change the ordinance on Lakeville Lake, we wanna make sure it's not going to disturb anybody else on your lakes, okay?
Will it go to the planning commission?
We don't know what's going on yet, so...
Okay.
We're waiting to hear, but I, that's what I'm saying, if you have something on your lake board, and see what they, you know, make sure that we're not offending them.
Be aware that it's going on.
Right. Well, good, we'll see what else that I have.
Is that Lakeville Lake overlay just for Lakeville Lake?
Slade Lot District overlay.
All Lake District.
Lake Lot District overlay.
All right.
Yes. Other than that, I don't have anything else, um, our next meeting will be June seventeenth at, uh, six o'clock, and, um, I need a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.